Mike McCool here in the Royal Examiner studio and with me today is Bill Seelock. Bill is a current councilman on the town council for another couple of days.
Just a couple of days.
Couple of days, so I asked Bill to come in and I said, well, let's talk about things that have happened since you were on the council and things that maybe the council should be doing, the new council, and hopefully they do some of these things. I know you've had some pet projects over the last couple of years. A lot of town safety and pedestrian things and just trying to get the council to move in a couple of different directions. And I thought, well, maybe you could just kind of highlight some things that's happened and kind of refresh our memory and some things that we need to think about going forward. What do you think?
Well, when four years ago when I joined council, I thought, I thought government was a matter of compromise and consensus. And I looked at work sessions as where you discuss your actions and your thoughts and where your constituency feels you should be. And what I saw was nobody talked. You never knew where a councilman stood. Then you try to express yourself and it just never happened that way. And then about a year and a half later, we have an interim town manager, our interim town mayor. And first objective for me, day one, was to have goals and objectives. And what I saw was meetings of five or 10 minutes and that just didn't suit my fancy very well. I really felt we should be discussing goals and objectives and make sure that, you know, we're going in the right directions. And so finally, about a year and a half later, we got our goals and objectives. And you know how I am by waving a sheet.
I can remember the agendas would always have goals and objectives listed and I just kind of like, nothing ever.
We don't have time to discuss that.
That's right, we'll do that later.
In about a half an hour meeting and.
I always got the impression, of course, you know, I'm trying to be involved in the council and things, but I always thought the council sometimes in the past has got too much in the weeds and didn't look down, didn't have these objectives and goals and the old 30,000-foot view, so to speak. You know, we have a town manager, former government. Why don't we let the town manager take care of the day-to-day stuff and the council just provide directions and things? And I think that's the way you felt as well.
That's the way I felt, yes, sir. That's exactly the way I felt. It didn't happen that way, but finally with the interim mayor, we finally started moving on goals and objectives and I was quite happy. But the first year was really understanding the, and I hope the new councilmen understand this, that you only really control one facet of the budget. And that's the general part.
Exactly.
That takes care of your town, your police, your infrastructure, you know, all those things that come under that peru. That's what you really control. Now, the water and electric and waste treatment and all that is kind of separate little budgets that you don't control. You kind of approve as you go into them, but the general is where you get the streets taken care of. You get the beautification taken care of. You get all the things that people really see on an everyday basis. You can borrow from those others, but you got to pay it back. Everybody forgets that.
Yeah.
The biggest issue I had the first year was trying to figure out how much reserve dollars were there because you got to take care of the infrastructure. And that was my biggest. The streets, I was not in favor of anything where you just coat over the street. That's all doesn't work like that. It's like having a driveway and you paint that black stuff, sealer over top of it.
Looks pretty for a couple of weeks, but.
Yeah, for a while and, you know, and I heard people talking about, well, we did miles of street. No, you didn't. You put a sealer on top of it. And one of the goals and objectives was to do something with our streets, which was very important to me. And it was on our objectives. We accomplished it and I felt very pleased about that. The other thing I'd made a commitment to the community and constituency was to, I felt going to meetings was extremely important. And I'm very proud of the fact I never missed a meeting. The pandemic had something to do with the last year, but never missed a meeting and was always there. And the other thing that probably, I didn't, I realized, but I didn't realize that you're going to please half the people part of the time and the other half, maybe never.
That's right. Well, yeah, that's kind of what they say. You can't please everyone, you know, but you think you can when you go into these things.
It is, that's the real challenge. Now, you have issues today and you'll have issues every day. But you, the only part that I really got concerned about with issues is educating the public why we were moving in this direction. And I don't think we probably did a very good job of that.
It's kind of hard going in the military when you were in, it's real easy. You bark out that order, it got done. All of a sudden you make something here and you, I can remember the old saying is, the general said, boy, that'd really look good if that fence was white. Next thing you know, they're out there painting the fence. He didn't tape paint it, but you know, that was the message and it doesn't happen in council that way. You can say, well, really good way of those curb and guttering. Five years later, that'd really look good if you had curb and guttering. So, yeah, it's not quite the same, is it?
No, I had the president of a rubber made come down on the manufacturing floor one time and he and I were doing, he was showing, he was a general walkthrough and not really knowing the products.
Right.
And we had a young operator over there just tossing parts away and, you know, I went up and I looked at him and inspected him. I didn't see a thing wrong with them. And the president said to me, he said, I don't see anything wrong with those. Why were you discarding them? And I said, well, I don't know right at this moment, but we'll take care of it. So I had them all boxed up and QC came in the next day and said, ah, no good. So, you know, it's kind of that way.
Right, right.
I had people tell me that you don't expect getting on council, you're going to make immediate changes. Because it doesn't happen overnight.
Right, right. Well, you did get some things done though, and I think we could talk about the things you did get done. I know you were really a strong advocate for the pedestrian safety. And you took on that project on South Street, so I know that got done, or at least we had a sidewalk and some lights put up and that helps. Of course, I was down there stopped right in front of it and a person's 40 feet down the road going across the road, so.
Well, here's what I learned. The acorn lights look beautiful at night and Christmas.
Right.
They really do. They're beautiful in town. Everybody loves to see them.
Our regular streetlights we have now.
But the problem is, I went with the town manager to a safety program on pedestrians. And what we learned was, it's just like you have these nice lights to reflect on us. Those acorn lights, you know, are what, 10 feet high?
Right.
Well, you need 12 and 15. So those lights only cast a shadow and you don't see it. One of the, one of the goals that we had was on Shenador Avenue was to extend some lights up to get more light so you can see people. Because people wear dark clothing and teenagers wear black clothing and you can't see them.
Right.
They can actually walk.
No flashlight, no reflection.
You can't see them.
Right.
They can actually walk right in front of you and you can't see them. So we started an education program. We established a committee with the police chief and staff, town manager, myself, and started making some changes. We looked at the VDoc program, which was 16 years old on South Street. But now they're, they're saying that they could upgrade South Street, but it'll be at least another four years before they can get to it, you know, with state funds. So it's always, you know, you want it now, but you're not going to get it till four years later. And that's what I found out on town council. You can't just.
That goes back to the 30,000-foot view though. You need to be thinking about things that are four and five and 10, 20 years down the road because it takes that long, you know, for things to gel out.
But you need, you know, the safety on South Street and the Shenador were extremely important and are extremely important. You know, just here this other week, I had a person walk out in front of me, in front of the old courthouse. I couldn't see him. My wife happened to notice and I slammed on the brakes.
Thank goodness our wives tell us how to drive, you know.
Certainly, certainly, always, always.
So I know, touch on some other projects. You've got a whole long list here. What are the kind of things that, that got done that maybe the public's not aware of?
Well, I just wrote down the ones that I thought that were significant that was accomplished.
Okay.
And I looked at, well, consensus to me is always with council, always very important. And I think this council finally got it when we changed leadership as mayor and we started moving. The CDBG project, the grant money. You know, you did a little program on the murals downtown. I think they're making significant improvement.
The restrooms that were going to be built down, that's going to make a long-term.
March, April.
Right. That took a long time to come, but that'll really make a big impact on our gazebo area, I think.
Well, it made an impact because there again, you know, you got a plan, we're going to attach bathrooms to the visitor center. No, you can't do that. You got to attach it over here because you're getting grant money. And that's what drove the cost of that little pavilion up was the restrooms. And then you got to, you got to worry about security and what type installations inside for cleaning and keeping it that way.
Once you build them, you got to maintain them.
Yep. You know, everybody forgets that. There's already your general funds again, but you got to constantly budget for.
Down the road for the, forever.
Ever.
But that's, that's a project that I think the council took on and allowed. I remember when Jeremy was talking about it, Director of Planning back here two years ago. Again, this is a two or three years ago this started. Didn't just happen last month. This is two or three years ago. And, you know, proposed and got the council to get it on board with that part of that operation, that pavilion and the bathrooms and stuff. So I think that's good.
And my, my tenure on that committee will continue until we get that pavilion done. So I represented the council to make sure we stayed in the budget. And that's how I know about the restrooms being added cost that wasn't planned for.
All right. What else you got?
Well, let's see. One of the first things I worked on was town manager job description.
That's going to, I was going to bring up the town manager project. That's, that's something we didn't have.
As most of you know, I managed people for many years and always had a decent job description and an evaluation process. And a good manager always has that kind of thing in place. And the job description that I viewed when we were looking for a new town manager, I said, that just doesn't cut it. It looked like something an eighth grader would write. And very seriously, I've written quite a few of them, so sat down and, you know, pulled in all the facts and, and, you know, it had to be done because what have we gone through? Two, three, three town managers now? So, very important.
So, speaking of our two new town manager, because we've gone through, on this particular round, we've gone through twice or three times people that you brought these in and narrowed it down from probably 80 people, maybe in the two rounds.
Probably over 100, but 80 that, 80 plus that the council actually saw.
Right, right. And so you've narrowed it down.
Because a contractor actually vets, you know, vets them to a certain point.
Right. So what, what made this town manager stand out?
Well, first of all, he, he came up through the ranks. He has managed all the facets that we have in this town as a director at some time or other. And that's, that to me was important for him to know all those facets. It's not like he was managing the whole thing, which he has, but he actually managed each facet and has that experience. So that was the plus for me.
Right, right. Does it hurt to have a little subject knowledge specialist around, does it?
Well, when you deal with a waste treatment plant, you're going to have some specialties.
Right.
I've been trained in waste treatment and it's not an easy process.
Right.
You've, you've got to be on your toes all the time and you don't get down in the weeds, as you said, but you do get involved and fully understand the process and he has that knowledge.
That's good.
And he knows water and somewhat, he's, might be lacking a little bit in electricity, but he can, you know, he knows how to negotiate contracts, so he'll be okay there.
So you have a good feeling about going forward with Mr. Hicks? You think he'll, he'll do a good job?
I think he'll do a good job. He's a, he appears to be a people person. I'm hoping that his personality will influence the whole community. Not only the town, but the county and the board of supervisors and, and the EDA.
That was always, I mean, you were a member of the EDA years ago too, so you have that experience working with them. And that was always been a subject, a poor subject was county-town relationships. How do you think that's gotten in the last, since you've been on council?
Well, that was one of my goals, objectives was to improve that relationship and it, it struggles all the time. It's like, I looked at the CARES Act, for example. It's like the county was the king and we were the servant. And it's a partnership.
Right.
And that's where I struggle. It's always like the county rules and the town is secondary. And I tried to work on that. And I don't know whether it's improved or not. It wouldn't, it's, it's not an issue, but you always have those little bouts every once in a while.
Well, it's a moving target because people are changed, the players change every two years. You know, we get new players.
Especially in the council, yeah.
And the council and the board of supervisors. And so it seems like, it seems like it's moving in the right direction. I think between the EDA, the town and the county, not perfect, but it's better than what it was in the past. So I think every day's an improvement.
I have some reservations because of, I said on the, you talked about one of the things that was accomplished was looking at the EDA and what happened to the town and the dollars. We finally got to police department, which I spent a lot of time with the finance director and meeting with the EDA. They, we finally got to the 8.4 million dollars, which, which I felt was a true number. See, before we would get a bill, well, you owe the EDA 300, I'll pick, pick a number, $159,000 for the quarter. I'm looking at that and I'm saying, 159,000 for a quarter? And you're now talking about a half million dollars. That piece of paper was a one-piece, one-sheet. When I did government contracts, when I presented a bill, it was like that because it had all the supplemental documents going in behind it. If I spent X hours of labor, that better be down to the dollar. You know, it's really justified and proven. If I bought materials, it was the same thing. And I know we're not talking about the same thing, but it's, that was never there.
Right. Always about the documentation, isn't it? Always about the.
There's always documentation. And I looked at the finance director and I said, you're not going to pay that, are you? He said, no.
They had been paying him in the past.
Yes. And that, that was very troubling. You know, when you present one sheet of paper that says you, you have $159,000, I'm sitting there, wait a minute. Something's wrong with this picture. That was one of the struggles I had.
So you think going forward, we've got that, that over the bridge now and we're moving forward?
I preached on enough.
You waved that sheet of paper around at every council meeting.
Well, that was my first year. I went through every dollar that was being said that we owe and I kept looking at the numbers and they just didn't jive.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's a struggle. Like you said, it's, people are overwhelmed. They take this job as a councilman or a board of supervisors, not realizing how much work it really takes. Not just showing up at a meeting an hour a week for something. It's a lot of time. Mayor Tewald even says, you know, I don't know if he could do it with it unless he was retired. It really takes up and I talked to Chairman May, maybe same way. He's, nothing to spend 50, 60 hours a week doing that job. And it's, it's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work. You got to be dedicated. I think, in my case, I think all councilmen get on council because you have a constituency out there and friends are saying, we'd like to see you do this. And you get committed to it and you do it for community service. And I was retired, so yes, I had the time to do it. So I put some time into it.
Well, let's talk about some stuff that didn't get done. And is there something on the top of the list that you wish you'd have got done?
Well, I was a real proponent of getting the afternoon moving and revamped and upgraded and, it has some historical value and I realize that. And it is a cornerstone for our main street. And I really wanted that done. I truly wanted that accomplished. And it's very frustrating that now we have a way forward. So now the question again is the interest, just like it was on the police station.
Right, right.
And, you know, I'm a firm believer that you've got to document your expenses if you want to get paid. And I have yet to see that myself, you know.
Well, there's rumors that it looks like that project is moving forward, at least behind the scenes. And it looks like something may come, come out, moving in the spring, hopefully. We'll actually see something get done there. Because for a while it was either tear it down or do something. And I think that was the attitude of all, we're just tired of talking about it.
Yeah, I didn't want to tear it down, but, you know, in hindsight, might have been better off to tear it down. Because we all know the history of that building.
Sure, sure.
It was not a favorable history.
No, it hasn't been, not in our lifetime anyway. So that's one thing. What else you got on your list of things you'd like to see that didn't get done?
Well, I've been a, the largest employer in this community is your school board. And when you look around and you see young school teachers that come in, and we have a lot of young school teachers and I've talked to the personnel manager for the school board, and there again, you've got young school teachers that have no place to stay. And I had people say, oh, I got a house or rent them. Well, they're not interested in houses. You know, young people are interested in apartments and this kind of thing. They don't want any maintenance, taking care of cutting grass and all that. They just want.
Who does?
Pull the car up front, get out, get in the apartment, so.
Yeah. Of course, you have back, that, that goes to the point where we have such a high number of rentals in this town. I mean, they say we, a community should have 40 to 50% rentals and we've got 70 to 80% rentals. So more rentals, what would that really, I mean, where, where are we at?
That's where I started. One of the objectives I've had was, you know, workforce housing. I'm still a firm believer in that. Although it failed at the EDA for whatever reason and I still believe it's appropriate for this community. I've talked to one builder that has a plan and I think we should move forward with that plan. I've seen so many housing developments, I've been sitting there 15, 18 years, that nothing's going forward with them. You know, every year they come back and ask for a renewal and nothing happens.
Right, right.
But I'd, I'd really like to see some really workforce housing happen in this community.
We got the space to do it.
There's quite a few places out there it could be done, yes.
Right, right.
I've looked at a lot of them.
I'm sure you have. So going forward, where do you think the council should be focused on, let's say in the next year to two years going forward? This next new council, where do you think they should put their focus? If you had some advice to give them?
Well, carry forward, the one thing that we did was infrastructure, this I and I program.
I don't think people realize how big a problem that really is.
Well, when you got older homes where there are gutters and downspouts are tied into the sewer system, we're asking for problems there. You've got dilapidated piping and we're replacing a lot of them or lining them, you know, six of one, six of the other, but has to be done. That's, that's a standard process. That's why I was interested in finding out how many reserve dollars we had. I finally got a number after two and a half years. Actually, it was around 12 million dollars. Then you get into the argument on council, well, we need, we need all that money for snow removal. Okay, the state requires, I forget the percentage.
Sure, sure.
You got to maintain a certain amount of reserve dollars. And I was the opponent, or not the opponent, but proponent of maintain a certain amount of reserve. And if you require a certain amount above what the state requires, then make that your standard for your budget. But council needs to know how many reserve dollars are actually there. And it took me a while to figure that out.
That budget is, you know, they, they hide things in budgets somewhere. They get good at it. Department heads can put something over here and something over there. It's like, I can remember when they were talking about no new employees. Well, we, we didn't really hire a new employee. Well, we hired three part-time people, but we're going to make that a full-time person. So, you know, how they hide that in the budget, you know.
Well, you hear proponents say, well, let's go back to zero ballots.
Yeah.
Well, you can't really do that.
Right, especially with so much of our budgets is already set by code, so to speak.
I mean, the biggest, biggest issue we had was the health insurance for employees.
Yes. That's a huge number.
It's, it's an astronomical, every business has that issue every year with the health insurance. Because the rates go up, you got to go out and you got to negotiate to get, get the rates where you want them or need them, that you can afford. And then you're affecting employee morale. You know, every year of that work, I had to go in and sit down with HR and say, okay, I want this option. I can afford this option. But it's a lot of work that goes in behind that to figure out which carrier you're going to use. You know, you can't just every year use the same one over and over.
Which we've done a lot of and, and not really, and all of a sudden the, the cost just escalated out of control.
Yeah. That's, you know, that's what council members do. You know, Jake Mesa has, has a wealth of knowledge about health insurance. And he was proponent of just not accepting, look at, verify, check, make sure everything is in line. And I had to agree with that.
Yeah.
I mean, we probably hurt morale a little bit, but we had to go get insurance policies that could fit our budget.
Well, Bill, I, I know you'd only spent four years.
Four years, that's enough.
Was that enough?
That's enough.
So we want to encourage, so you encourage this kind of, yeah, I know you're in the golf, Bill lives on the golf course now. I said, Bill, what are you doing? I'm going to go out and visit the greens and see how they're doing, you know.
Two home ones this year.
There you go.
And few eagles to go with that and I play with a, a great group of guys.
Well, you know, it's, there's a limited window. We were talking, coming up to the stairs here, you said the knees and the legs starting to give out. Well, that's, that's going to affect your golf game there, so you know, you're going to have to get in as much golf as you can. And that's one good thing about the pandemic, the golf courses were still open.
Certainly. I loved every round of them.
Outdoors in the, in the air, so that was good. That was good. Well, Bill, I think we want to encourage, of course, people that have an inkling for doing community service to consider this. I do know that you do have a vacancy on the council right now because of Mayor Holloway taking over in January. I think the cutoff is like tomorrow or Friday. If you're interested in that seat, send a letter over to the town, your resume.
No, I'm, I'm the age where.
You're not going to, you're not going to.
I've done enough service between the Marine Corps and community activities.
So you're not going to apply for this job then, but if someone is interested in it, that may be some way to get your feet in there wet. It's a, going to be a short term.
The new council's got to make that decision.
It's going to be a hard decision to make because the same thing, no matter what you do.
You're going to please some and just please others.
Please the other. And I know we, and again, that's what I remember. Tomorrow I have Matt Tiedrichs coming in to talk to me. We always said, you know, we don't always agree on everything, you know, but in the long run, as long as we're both doing it for the right reason, I think we can, we can compromise and get along with people. I noticed we've argued over the last four years over different topics, but overall, you know, I think we, we look at the big picture. And I think that's what you have to do and move forward on it. we look at the big picture and I think that's what you have to do and, and move forward on it.
Well, uh, message I could convey to the new councilman. Understand your constituency, understand the people out there and talk to those people. I made an issue every Thursday, I walk Main Street. I walked up and down that street every Thursday, just like clockwork.
Meet a lot of people, don't you?
And work sessions are where you start to understand where this person's coming from. And you don't always agree. I remember my first year, I had a councilman, he and I butted heads every time. I came to, uh, streets and sidewalks and curving gutter. And Mr. Tewalt was beside me and he egged me on cause he, he knew how important curving gutter was to this waste treatment system. You gotta direct the flow the way you want it to go. And every time he would not talk during the work session. But when it got up into the regular meeting, then, then he would talk. And I'm sitting there thinking if the citizens are sitting out there and they got a point of view, they could learn by listening to the work sessions.
Right.
Cause that's where the give and take occurs. And that's why we say that compromise. You know, I didn't get everything I wanted anytime, but I had to compromise a little bit to get to consensus. And when you hear people say, well, you all just following the town manager. No. We went into a work session, we discussed everything. And we came out, then that's why you would see a consensus.
Well, one of the things in the last, since two thousand sixteen, of course, with the Royal Examiner, I, I'm like you, I think the work session is probably a more important meeting than the actual council meeting and uh, no one had ever covered work sessions and, and, uh, there's never any video where people could watch a councilman at work. And that's what we always tried to do here is watch your council work. Become involved. If you have a concern, this is where you find out about whether your representative's doing anything for you. You find that out in the work session. Uh, other than, cause at the council meeting, you either vote yea or nay, and that's the end of it. You don't know what went on. And and so watch those work sessions, cause that's really an important part of your local government and how, how things happen and you see the discussion on it. And there is a lot of discussion sometimes on these.
And it's, it's not always your way.
No.
I had to give up a lot, a lot of times.
Yeah.
And I'd have people call me, well, why'd you do that bill? And I'd say, you know, I had to give a little bit to get something.
That's right. You had to move forward. Yeah. So the work sessions are important and that's the one thing, we have Mark there with the camera now and and, uh, you know, we, we wanna make sure that people are trying to be involved in their government instead of just being armchair quarterbacks and complaining all the time. Let's get involved and become and find out what the facts are. And you do that by watching those things and participating. And then actually going to the meetings when you can and, and showing up and, and, uh, and let your representatives know, I think, what's going on. And so few people say, I voted for them, that's their business. And and not really care one way or the other, what goes on. I, I just, I think that's, I think we're doing a disservice to our, our councilman and to our town government just by not being involved.
I had on my list of regrets, I'll call them.
Okay.
Happy Creek, you know, I was a fisherman one time, fly fisherman. And I've actually fished the Happy Creek trout. And my granddaughter caught her first trout right there at Marlow's. Down behind the ball park.
Right.
And the Happy Creek to me, and I, and I spent a lot of time listening. I went to the meeting, Mark, uh, was there.
You were the only councilman that showed up.
Well, I thought it was important enough to show up and listen. So not only did that, but I went over to Winchester. You know, they have a, a creek over there too. And guess what you find over there?
Trout?
No, you find riprap.
Oh.
Up and down it. And they're, they're, they're fixing it up in behind the place I worked at Rubbermaid.
Right, right. They're basically channelizing the creek to make sure.
Exactly right. That's what they're doing. So I looked at the situation on our piece. The neglect for thirteen years, neglect, that's what it was. Yeah, I hear we went in and cleaned out where the flow was coming. But for thirteen years, nothing's really been done there. I looked at a sign over there that somebody should be maintaining. That explains channels and laterals and all the different things. It's dilapidated, it's falling apart. So, you know, we look at, well, the town staff neglect. Did the keepers of the creek neglect? Yes, it's a community issue that neglected occurred for thirteen years. The erosion is so bad in spots over there that it's taken away the walkways. And now the only savior for it is riprap. Now, I don't agree the contractor cutting trees of four inches or better. But the public didn't know the guy or the company was terminated from that project. Now we gotta fix it. I want, I'd like to see grasses in the creek. Grasses help the life of the creek. I'd like to see some channeling occur. Cause you gotta have, kind of break that flow every once in a while. I understand all that. And that's what I picked up when I sat there and listened. A councilman's gotta listen to what people are, you might not agree with them, but you gotta listen. And that's where I come from. But, um, I'd like to see an improvement on this Happy Creek. The proponents that say, oh, we need all this. And staff saying, well, we have a contractor, uh, an engineer contractor that does this, has done it for thirty years, he must have some expertise. And there's gotta be some compromise in there to get, that's what was my point. That's why I was trying to get listening to David Means and, and the, I can't remember the guy that's Friends, Friends of the River. Involved. And it's, it's sad that U F A C personnel, you know, just quit rather than getting involved and listening and say, okay, we could do this, this and this since this, uh, tree cutting occurred. And that, that's where I think they should really be. They should be actively involved saying, okay, can we plant new trees? Can we do whatever? What's your recommendations? Uh, for them to just quit bothered me. But I, I'd like to see a, a resolution to that. And riprap's gotta help that erosion problem. It's gotta happen. When I first got on council, all I heard about and, and you remember it, we had the flooding. You remember Main Street was flooded. All the manholes came up because it couldn't take the water away fast enough. So that's all I heard. We gotta do something about the flooding. And I think you and I even had that discussion from your little background.
Oh, yeah, right here. Yeah. Flood's right behind our building here.
You got it right here. And, uh, it's a small effort. But you gotta continue this effort. So there, there's.
In far as the flooding, a very small little change has a major impact on the backing up of the water. And I know here on Eighth Street it backs up. If one little thing happens or if they forget to take this down or a log gets caught something, next thing you know, it's flooded the entire area, just one little thing. So that's why you have to stay on top of it. And and these small little changes you do, do make, it makes a difference, makes a difference.
But I did, I did go over to Winchester and I observed what they're doing over there. And guess what? That's exactly what they're doing. They're putting down riprap. And there was a change, uh, between the contract and, you know, calling for fifteen feet of riprap. Now it's five and some and fifteen and others. Where those big erosion holes are, it's gotta be fifteen feet to maintain the bank. But along some of those old surfaces, five will keep it bellied and channeled. So that's the way I'm, I'm looking at it.
Yeah. So that's not too many regrets.
No, no, not really. I just, uh,
Well, Bill, I.
Council is work.
It is work.
It's more than just going to meeting on Monday night and getting in front of the microphone. That used to drive me nuts. Say nothing in the meeting, the work session where the real uh, work gets done. And then go to the meeting and talk. I, I just, that's why I never use the microphone. Except, exceptions to clarify or clear something up. I thought that was important.
Bill, I appreciate you coming in and talking to us today. Uh, I know you, we wanna get, try to get together with everyone as they go on and off these, uh, councils, just to kind of see where they're, that the public see how they felt. Maybe, uh, maybe a, a notion that they didn't really think this way, that you thought, you know, communications, you know, and I think that's what it's about. So again, we appreciate it and thank you for your service, uh, uh, on our council for the last four years. Uh, you did some great things, you did some dumb things and you did some good things. So but hey.
You don't win them all.
You won't win them all. And, but the fact that you step up and do it, and that's what we need people to do in our community. Step up. There's a lot of good people that live in our community and it'd be just great. Uh, if you haven't, you know, think about it, you can do it. Just step up and, uh, and become involved in the community. Maybe it's not council, maybe it's some of these com, uh, committees and, and, uh, programs that we have, but there's always something for people to do, um, to make our community a better place to live.
I think so.
Again, really appreciate it again. Thanks, Bill, so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I'm sure we'll see you, you won't see me on the greens too much, but, uh, maybe back and forth, we'll see you. All right. Thanks again.
Yep.